We'll keep this short and sweet, but please feel free to ask any questions you want to have. I'm here for you also. Before we jump to the results, I want thirty seconds just to give you one piece of background information that I didn't provide in our workshop. I think I wasn't explicitly clear about it. We've been talking about revenue increases for water, sewer, and reclaimed water. And as part of our analysis, we did an analysis, a very high-level analysis of your stormwater utility. And we made an assumption, because we were looking at a five-to-ten-year forecast period, that we were going to have some level of revenue increase in stormwater as well. But we're really here to talk more about water, sewer, reclaim. We just wanted to give you that background information. We're looking at it, that's not official or formal at this point, just a high-level analysis, because we've had to do that to factor some of those results into the debt service coverage ratio we discussed. So just wanted to disclose that. Nothing major to deal with tonight. Those in the water, sewer reclaim.
But the stormwater fund is solvent?
It is solvent, absolutely, absolutely. And our thought process there was to keep it solvent over the next five to ten years. We'd like some level of smaller incremental increases. So we just assume that as a planning purpose, just like we assume costs go up by a certain escalation factor. But again, we're more focused on water, sewer reclaim for right now. So with that bit of a background, let me go right into the results and some options for you all for your consideration. And I'll briefly point out what you're looking at if you haven't had a chance to review it yet. Fiscal years 2016 through 2020, the five-year forecast period. And we have six options for you. And we wanted to give you sixty, but we pared it down to six. Probably could have pared it down more, but just wanted to give you the full flavor. So option one is a revenue increase of about two percent a year. That would be that CPI-based sort of inflationary increase. And you can see that we have good debt service coverage during the forecast period. It's on the lower end, but remember, our minimum as an internal number is 1.25. And we sure like to get to 1.5 if we could. On the other end of the scale, instead of looking at two percent, let's go down to the option six and look at the other end of the spectrum. If we were to go up to 3.25 percent every year, we would be able to get to that 1.5 coverage ratio we're looking for around 2019.
I think we can see.
Yeah, if it's not on the screen now.
Oh, it would. We need to change the resolution to obviously show up.
That's okay.
Well, let's see if we can do the old-fashioned review. Is that a little better? It's not quite as big, I apologize for that. But if we look at 3.25, the option six, we get to a 1.5 coverage ratio in four years. And if you'll remember from some of our discussions, that we started to look at the need to issue debt around the 2018, 2019 period. So this is going to put us in a good position with the rating agencies when we go out to debt. But as part of our charge, we wanted to provide you what we consider our recommended option. Instead of going all the way to the 3.25, we think three percent is a good round number. It gets you to 1.5 coverage by the end of the forecast period and is certainly a strong coverage ratio in the interim. So six different scenarios. Our recommended option will be three percent. Obviously, we serve at your pleasure, so your thought process is interesting to us. So that's the quick version. I'd love to hear some questions or comments if you have some.
So I've already publicly announced, I guess, the seven percent increase takes place in June, right?
Thereabouts, yeah, thereabouts, yes.
Yes. So this is, that's about a five-dollar-a-year increase to a.
I wish it were five a year, it's five a month. Around five a month, five and change a month, yes, sir.
So this is less than a five-dollar-a-month increase for that.
Thereafter, yes.
You know, when I told, I explained to people what you explained to me, you know, we've got to do this, we've got to get ourselves in that position. No, no, when I spoke, you had a problem.
Wasn't there a saying that was seven percent?
No one had a problem.
Yeah.
There was. That would be option number one, where we did the seven percent in 2015 and then two thereafter. So that would be, that would be this option one we're talking about.
But that doesn't quite get us where we want to be as far as that 1.5?
No, it should be nice to get closer to that 1.5 around the time you're going to issue debt.
Is 1.25 the minimum or 1.1?
1.1 is a legal minimum, 1.25 is a permanent minimum. 1.5, you get treated real well.
And where are we now, close to the 1.1?
My projections show that you're going to be in the 1.25 range, you're around where you're, where you're planning. My projections for 2015, it's going to happen, but we're pretty comfortable with that number. With the, with the increase, yeah, with the seven percent increase. So you would be in compliance with your own policy, certainly in compliance with your bond documents.
So the seven percent.
Tell us the chart with the seven percent. Go on the jack, because I could have sworn we had a seven percent and then all twos and it got you where you wanted.
Well, that's, what's happened is.
That's what this one is.
We did.
Fifteen has dropped off the.
Yeah, this one doesn't have fifteen on it.
I've removed 2015 from the, from the graphic, because the seven percent is sort of a given amongst the scenario. And the two percent, so the scenario, you remember, 7.1 and then two percent thereafter, that's essentially option one at this point.
Seven percent has happened, we're just only showing five years.
All of these scenarios assume seven percent. 7.1 percent goes into effect around the June timeframe.
Right, so it's actually going to be, if we go with option six, it's actually going to be a ten-and-a-half percent increase this year.
1.25, yes, sir.
This year or next year?
This year, because you're going to have 7.1 in the middle of the year and then the other three-and-a-half percent in October.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So June is when you're going to hit the bill with the jerry's terms, the annual indexing. That will be the catch-up from the CPI issues of the past. That'll, that'll get you flat. Now, if we do this, let's say we did this recommended option, does that keep us from having a meeting for the next five years? I mean, does this fix it now? And I like what you said, that that 1.5, Wall Street likes that, that's about the time we're going to start issuing some debt. You know, Bobby's going to need some new toys. So if we do this now, because, and we've asked this so many times when we had the other consultants, if we do this and improve this, you know, I always like to ask, are we done? You know, is this going to take us for five years to where we don't have to come back here and talk about this? I mean, in Europe, you don't know what's going to happen, but I mean, is it going to get us close?
My firstborn, but I, my goal is to not come back to see you for five years. But as wonderful as you folks are, my goal is to get you a plan that keeps you from having to talk to me for five years unless I just want to.
Is that a resolution that'll come to us? Is that will have a three percent minimum increase? Or are we maintaining that CPI-indexed increase?
That's one of the questions that I had for you tonight.
Because it doesn't answer Steve's question, because we're not, we don't have an ordinance that says we're going to do three percent a year yet.
No, it doesn't.
Right, that's a good point.
That was something I was going to ask you, is that if you go with the recommend, then what I would, what I would recommend to you is that we revise the resolution to state that it will be the greater of the CPI or the three. So you, like we talked about with the floor and the ceiling.
Yeah.
Set the floor and then set the ceiling.
And the ceiling's already stayed at five.
And the ceiling's at five.
What's the CPI? Does anything you know what the CPI has averaged the last five, ten years? I know we had that one year.
1.96.
1.96, okay.
It's been, it's been, it's been under two for many of those years, but one year it was a 3.8.
Yeah, that 3.8, I think it was 2011, right? Okay, so figure about two percent, though, just to round up.
Now, I don't, I don't know if you all discussed it in the briefing, but I don't know how the CPI relates to real costs. It's just an index. What I think I heard was that just doing the CPI increase doesn't really maintain what we're looking for as far as that, that debt service ratio.
I think you're on the right. Those were, that's basically what I said, so I obviously agree with it.
But option one is essentially two percent of the CPI. Just you're not getting it at 1.5. Hovering on the limit on that.
Mr. Burton, when you take into account chemicals and you take into account all the other operating supplies that continually to increase in, in cost above what the CPI is, then yes, the CPI is not covering that. So you do, even though you, you move forward, but you still probably don't catch up.
All right, any other questions? Who's comfortable with what?
I'll vote for five, option five.
Consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Now, how do we start to lower our costs? I wish that were my area of expertise.
If efficiencies are something you're interested in.
That's these guys.
If we work with the desert central operational study, we've done CDR efficiency, but we're talking to workers. You have to keep in mind, there's only so much of your budget created there. But in all things that are really outside of your management control, how much is left? Can you really save money on, or on efficiency? We don't know, we haven't done that level.
Let me ask one question. Joe, you got the sewer plant retrofit renovation coming up. Will that provide any efficiency? Okay, so that builds in capacity. So that, I don't know if that helps on a per-gallon basis or whatever, but it would increase the revenue.
Okay, so, so let's, let's, let's work off of that. How do we increase volumes into our plant? So that, that way, the full cost of what we're charging for sewage comes to us, which will increase your cash flow, which will lessen your demand on rate increases. And then how do we increase our sales? We have a water plant operating at 40% capacity. Now, you know, there are options that we keep bringing up and everybody keeps tap dancing around them rather than hiring the attorney and going after them. So that's a conversation we need to have.
You talking about the Aqua?
Yes, I am. That, that, that is the answer. We're, we're just going to keep raising rates if we don't start selling more and pumping more. And, you know, there's, there's, there's concerns on the county level about what we want to do with it. And what I suggested during my meeting with them is that, yeah, I'll go along with this for now, but this is, this isn't the solution. We're just going to keep raising it three percent a year? What kind of solution is that?
Increasing capacity.
Here's, here's what happens.
Increasing capacity doesn't, doesn't necessarily hold the operating cost at bay. It increases the operating cost too.
If we acquire Aqua, we acquire a sewer plant, that increases the capacity of sewage that we can process. We don't have to spend the money, the capital money at our current plant. We'll also pump water to another 1,500 customers or 1,200 customers, however many there are, at a plant that we're already paying for. That plant's already operating, so that, to sort of pump the extra water isn't a cost, it'll be the revenue that we bring. And we can charge them 25% more and it'll still be 50% less than what they're paying now. Now, there is some agenda on the county with us doing it, but my suggestion was with the rate consultants, Mr. Cobb, Bobby, you go sit with the county, sit with the commissioner Delari, and show them the whys that help Oviedo.
Did they do that?
I know.
Not yet?
That's why I was going to bring it up tonight.
Why wouldn't it help the county too, or help those citizens that are in the county?
They're afraid that we're going to just, you know, annex and take them all over. Even though, even though, quite frankly, they're not in the joint JPA, we could do it right now if we wanted to, but, you know, we have no interest.
Yeah, we, you know, we, you know, we've never had an aggressive annexation policy. If they want to annex them, I guess we would consider it. But my concerns on that was that part of the distribution area we would be taking in is pretty damn old.
That would have to be all factored in, and CPH has been working. Teri Zaki designed the system when he was a young engineer, he's very familiar with it. But then we set, we get sewage from 800 more customers, we turn Live Oak and Sanctuary around out to that sewage plant. We will be making, well, we're getting all their reclaimed water as it is now, but we'll have more reclaimed water to sell, liquid gold. That's how you, you, you increase the volume. We've got this thing sitting on Mitchell Island Credit, 40%, that's all it's operating at. If you pump out another million gallons a day, it's not going to cost you that much more money. The thing's there, the capital cost is there. Bring the revenue in. Lower these increases, no offense. Right now, we're still sending Christmas cards, you and I, so.
Well, that's, you know, how do we get to that? Brian is.
Yeah, what do we got, what's the next step, Brian? Because, you know, I brought it up on the dais, and I know they, they brought it up with the, the attorney that's involved. The attorney that's involved is the one we have to use. I mean, he's it. I mean, he, he's the guy who's in bed with all these utility companies. If anybody's going to spring it loose, it's Sunstrom. So, Brian, what's the next step, at least? I guess you got to go sit with the county.
Yeah, because if they're bought and it's.
Add the five-year covenant, but we'll let Sunstrom take care of it.
Yeah, something going on with that.
The company that runs it contacted us and wanting to know what was going on. And I told them what we were doing, we were investigating. And they brought up the five-year covenant, and they, it's part of the bonds, evidently. They purchased the system as part of a group of systems. And so they would have to somehow split it all out and figure out what the value is and everything. But they have this five-year covenant that they have to, to, to operate. The other part of it is, is that the county has a seat with this, with this group.
Florida Government Utilities.
Yeah, Florida Government Utilities. The county's the sponsor of this utility. And sort of like, the best way I can explain it, it's like with the CRA, when we had to go ask the county to allow us to make a CRA. It's pretty much the same thing. We have to go to the county and ask them to make us the sponsor, which is hence why we need to go talk to Mr. Delari. Mr. Delari is getting pushback from the residents because they just see that this is a devious plot to overtake them and annex them into the city.
Well, if they want to keep paying three times as much water, then let them do it.
Well, they, you know, Mr. Delari's pushback has been, you know, well, now the county's interested in it. The county's interested in running the system. You know, and so.
Even though there's a study out there. Bobby, have you found, did Mr. Cobb ask you to find that study? Remember the, remember the last time we were looking at Aqua and we had the public, the PSC hearings over here in Canterbury? And they were having all those issues. The county did a study on them acquiring Aqua when it was Aqua. And in the study, it said, it's not the right fit for us, it's perfect for Oviedo. All right, we got to dig around and find it. It is floating around somewhere. I bet you Melanie has it. It, no, we called up the county. There, there was a county in it that they hired a consultant to do it. And right in the study, it said, when the county was looking at acquiring it from Aqua, that it's not the right fit for the county, the county doesn't have water lines out here that they can service it with. And it said right in there, this is perfect for Oviedo. So we got to take that study and go out and conversation.
So if we were to service them with water and sewer, would their quality be better?
Oh, ten times better.
Now, they're, 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 we're way ahead of ourselves because there's a whole host of other issues that, but, but nothing ventured, nothing gained. You know, there's, there's issues with our consumptive use permit that staff would have to go work out and.
That's a great question, yes. Their water plant out there is, looks like our old Boston Hill water plant.
And don't they have a lot of problems with water pressure?
FGUs put a lot of money.
They, they, they've upgraded a lot. They've upgraded it, they fixed it, the water's passable now, but it was not always.
You can pack up.
No, no, this is a much increased.
It was not always passable. And giving them our water out of our $15 million plant, I can tell you, there are a lot of people who live off of Snow Hill Road. They're in those new subdivisions that used to live in Oviedo, and they want that water. So the question becomes, is, you know, the county could take that over? Are they going to be able to give them? The, the water is better, but they're going to have to use that plant. We could use our plant and send in much better water, you know, and, you know.
Well, if it gets right back to it, that is a good selling point right there.
Yeah, oh, that'd be great.
All the pipes are out on 4/19. We've got, our pipes are right there. You know, and Florida Government Utilities, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, or Bill, or gentlemen, I mean, their whole sole existence is to buy these or manage these decrepit utilities, right the ship, so to speak, and then look to divest them. I don't think they're a long-term hold company. Correct, right?
There's, there's a reason why they can sell.
That, I mean, that's why they exist. They buy these decrepit companies, they fix them up, and then they hope to sell them back to the local municipality. Well, we're the local municipality.
Three hundred dollar-a-month water bills out there for really bad stuff.
Now, Bill Sunstrom is the character. You might all remember him from the sewer plant deal, but if you all think back, Bill worked for us, tried to acquire Aqua, that's when that study came out, when we had Bill working for us. Tried to acquire Aqua for us. The county did the study, there were the PSC hearings. But really with that was, was the leverage to get into Utilities Inc., because Bill also represented them to get them to sell, because they didn't want to break off this plant. They wanted to sell it as a whole package. Everybody said it could never be done, Bill got it done. Now, you know, probably Bill does more than he was worth, but whatever, we got the deal.
Have you talked to him at all, Brian?
Oh, I've talked to him.
He calls me every darn day, I'm going to have to start calling you guys.
Oh.
Once a week he calls.
What did I explain to him? When we met, when we all met earlier about this? When, when I found out about the five-year covenant, I figured, okay, there's nothing left to read.
Then he laughed at that while I talked to him.
Well, he says he can work around it.
If you guys got to know Bill, you'd really like him. Think Jim Greer, but not Jim Greer. You know what I'm saying? That kind of personality.
Oh, no. When we first, when we first broached it with you, I did ask you, would you prefer that we try to do something with him? Or should we go out and do an RFP? And Mr. Sunstrom said he was willing to do. The consensus at the time was go do the RFP. One of the questions I asked Mr. Colbert is, you know, could we work through Stenstrom to hire him without having to go through the OMP or recruitment process? And that's something that he just told me now, is that, you know, we could work through Stenstrom, they could bring him on as co-counsel and work through them if you wanted to go that route.
There's 26 emails from him over the last three months.
That's, you know, that's something that I would, you know, seek direction from you all. One thing that Jeff told me about recently as well is that one of the things that they, and actually I should let you explain it, but they specialize in this type of thing.
Utility evaluation and acquisition is one of our core services. What you're talking about doing is acquiring customers, because you want, you want the incremental revenue. You can't, I mean, this is.
We're paying the capital cost anyway.
That's right, and, and you're not going to, you're not going to sell more water to your existing customers. You have to add a customer to get that incremental revenue. So this, we understand the strategy, we, we don't disagree with the strategy. The, the thing that makes a difference is when we talk to Brian and the rest of the staff. You almost have to go put some brackets on it. How much, what, what could I possibly pay? Would this possibly be worth to me? And still make the kind of margin that I want to on this customer to make it worthwhile? And, and, well, I mean, there's a way to value, and say, I, I could pay between one and five dollars if it still makes sense. Then you have to look around and say, would the seller, seller trouble between one and five dollars? Now you know whether I've got a deal out there.
I think that's the questions we had when we talked about this, what was it, six months ago or something? Because it, it's not clear to me that it's a, it's a worthy venture.
Oh, that's the thing, I mean, that was when it was first.
Especially with the, the distribution system we'd be dealing with.
Right, I, when it was first broached, I believe Mr. Sunstrom told the mayor it would be three million. And he later told me, no, three to six. And then, and then he said, well, relation report's six. And, and, you know, the mayor and I talked about it, and I said, well, if it's six million to buy and 36 million to upgrade, that's not a good thing for us. And, but that's one of the things, you know.
We have to do, do diligence.
There is a range where it makes sense to you, regardless of what the seller wants.
Right.
There's a range where it makes sense for you to try to, 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 it's possible to quantify.
Terry, it, it, it's basically to, to, the way I see it is to make this.
Well, Terry's done all the reports on it. The basic reports on conditions, where the lines are.
Right, that's the thing, is that it's, it's not so much that we go out and we have Mr. Sunstrom. It seems like we have to have a team of folks. We have Terry working through our continuing services agreement and helping us from the engineering perspective, I think. And then Jeff and Jonathan from the financial perspective.
Sunstrom to make the deal.
Sunstrom working through with.
I just have a quick question, just as we're.
From the legal perspective.
Joe, Brian, just as we're, we're talking about this, you know, let's assume everything came to fruition and we got that plant. That plant, you know, the way they're treating it, you know, they've got it up to where it's passing everything. But I'm assuming, and Bobby, maybe you can disanswer this, if we were going to supply water to those people off of Snow Hill Road, we would not be supplying it from that plant, correct?
Actually, we've got, we've got a great plant, they're going to use that plant for Live Oak Sanctuary in Riverside.
Yeah, okay. No, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, would, would we not just?
Listen here, Bobby.
Would we, would we not just, you know, continue the pipe there and give them water from Mitchell Island?
I'll give you the city manager answer, and then we'll let him do the real answer.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need a law, I just want to know what that would, I mean, that's the whole purpose of that, to get those folks better water, right?
Here, here's the plan, Bobby can say it better than I can. If that, if, if we can get their consumptive use permit laid on top of ours, not inside of it, but on top of it, then we can take and run everything through our plant and basically use their plant in the complex section.
Okay, that's, that's accurate.
The only, I, I think that the acquisition of Aqua was the next, is the next logical progression in the scheme of things.
Okay.
For the city. The only thing I would ask is, let's not leverage the city's future on that consumptive use permit, because that's a big deal that we got already, that's twenty-year permit.
That's all part of the deal, which is you back to Rockland.
That's the only thing that I can see.
But that would be the case, so if they get the consumptive use permit on top of us, that we have the extra capacity, we would just splice them into their distribution system and they'd get water from Mitchell Island.
That's a huge deal because we're not losing anything for our own.
Now, even though, even though they do have, you know, pretty bad pipes out there, infrastructure that's not like ours. You know, they get, that's a big, that's, you know, you don't know what's out there, you know?
Send them water to higher pressure, if we could, you know.
I know, I know, I know what happened when you guys turned on reclaiming some neighborhoods. You were blowing sprinkler heads off over here. Can you imagine they getting really good water out there? That whole thing might explode, right?
Bobby, at the, at the space center, we get our water from Coco, and that's a long way from the water plant. We have issues with chlorination issues and contaminant issues at the end of the line. The water's dead. How would we deal with that sort of thing?
We, we fight the same problems now. We have to loop the system, maybe have.
Flush it out every now and then.
Yep.
Hydro flushers.
Yep, we have them all over the city. I'm one of them. I guess the stall one in your neighborhood, actually. One of those auto flushers?
I did it.
Yeah, just to keep the water. Because that's one of the consequences we have now that reclaim is all over, is it drags the, drags the water demand down. We're actually doing fantastic on our water uses from a consumptive use, you know, consideration.
Remember before you.
The water doesn't move through the system like it used to.
Yeah, but you got to have a, highly turn on it for, for a day to flush out a system like that.
So the auto flushers are just on a hydrant, so someday it's always a company's.
They're using their hydrant, they just kind of, they push out a certain amount of water at a certain time of day, just to keep the system moving.
Is that like on somebody's street, or is that like a?
Usually on the end of the street, right? Like you go to Dead End.
Lockwood, no lockwood, no water, that retention pod, just open it up. I think the county does that.
No, it's not like a hydro boom like that, it's like a dump on the ground.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not.
Remember how the water used to be before you got the program, where you flushed like in June through September or whatever? How bad it used to be, it'd come up in the morning, turn the water on, it was like, right, now it's really bad. Then we got that, now we don't have that. Because I know they use my house to test all the time, they're always.
We should put those spray things in the front, like they used to do in New York, and just open them up, let the kids play.
Flush pads on a.
What was it called? They have one with kids in my neighborhood.
Now.
And that was after the DDT mosquito farmer came by, you guys played with.
All right, so, I mean, that's, I'm glad that we had that conversation. What do you need from us?
I don't need to proceed to. Any RFP?
I think you should work with Stenstrom, that's my opinion.
I don't have an opinion, go ahead and do it. I don't have a preference. No, yeah, yeah, go ahead and do that.
No preference is a yes, if he doesn't vote, it's a yes.
Do you have a recommendation? Who's the who will?
Do we need, do we need to take this step? Do we need the okay with this thing with the county, though?
Right, well, I was just going to, I think you need to go, I think part of it needs to be the plan succession, you know? Sit, sit with the county and show them this, show them why.
And show them that report that the mayor brought up, that back when.
They have it, they work.
Well, they need to be re, reacquainted with that, yeah, because, because I know that some in the county, they are looking at that very seriously, and they want that. They'll take care of it, that's what I heard. So this is called a little friction. So I think we are much better at, at doing it, but it's a great point. I mean, if we can make that.
I think that that's a reaction, a political reaction to the concerns that, that some of the residents are having. I think if the county realizes this is monetary, not policy, that, that will change that conversation.
Yeah, well, I agree. March on, and I say use Bill and Fani to facilitate that, I'm good.
Plus, I think we would have to do some type of, and I'm not sure where that would fit in the process, kind of like an educational thing to those communities.
Well, last time we did this, I don't think you were with us yet. They started a whole thing, they called it Flow or something, remember? Save our, one of, had Billboards out there because they heard that the city was looking at it.
Well, maybe we should start like early.
They, if they.
I, I've had conversations with Deborah Schaefer and Jay Zambauer. I think there could be some work. Dave wasn't as hard against it as he was.
Are these homeowners?
These, kind of, kind of like the Chulio leaders.
Because there's probably some new ones since then.
Those are the difference.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, their, their fear is when you.
The, the, the old ones are, you know, they're old.
What I've heard from my Deborah, you know, their fear is you're dropping pipes and that's just, you know, setting their infrastructure for more development. But I think if you just let them know, I mean, all the people that I know that live out there and those new developments off of Snow Hill, they all want our water for years because they used to live here, they know. And they're tied to those large bills.
And if you look at the, actually, the rural boundary, Chulio, we could annex Chulio right now. But there isn't any reason to annex Chulio. There's no developable land, it's just not something that we would want. So their, their fear of, and I explained that to Jay Zambauer and he didn't realize it, is that your fear about us annexing is silly because we could annex you right now. No, you can't. I said, yes, we can go look at the boundary now. But this is monetary. We need to show them what we have to do to our residents who are also their citizens.
Right.
And how this could fix it for not only their citizens out there, but their citizens in here.
Over the years, I've been hundreds of millions of dollars of these sorts of acquisitions, utility acquisitions.
We don't believe you, don't worry, we're in.
No, no.
I heard you getting a little piece of this.
No, no, it's not, it's not, we certainly appreciate that, but the point I wanna make is, for one like this, it's a little more complicated. Some of the deals do themselves, but for this one, you need to attack it on a, from a political perspective, an operational perspective, and a financial perspective, sort of in a multi-headed approach. And you're right, this one's not as easy as the typical, but it might be worth it.
But I think, as we have talked about, if, if, with, with your help, Bobby's help, Terry Zaki, Brian, none, none of the politicians, just other than Bob, go talk to the county and show them this, and we'll get a better gauge.
That was my next question. Are you okay with me taking this approach, are they multi, multifaceted?
Yes. Yeah, but don't include any of us because if we're in the room, then it just changes the conversation.
Yeah, you might wanna have a lot of work sessions on them. Keith's calendar's free.
Yeah, Brian, can we have a work session to discuss what we're gonna discuss this, yeah?
Okay, we're past our time.
All right, are we, gentlemen, do you have anything else for us?
I need one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, come on, it's been thirty-two minutes. It's itchy scratching over there.
To complement what we've talked about, are you okay with revising the resolution to establish what we talked about? Establishing the floor.
The minimum and the. That's what we just told you.
I just wanted to make sure.
For our listeners. Let me, let me tell you something I just learned after fifteen years. If it isn't in the motion, they don't have to do it.
It isn't in the motion. Do we need a motion?
No. But if it's not in the consensus, if it's not in the, the motion, then technically it's not part of the record. Technically, they can't force it. I learned that the other day, after all these years. I just assume, you know, all those conversations we had, then we make a motion to assume all our conversations are in there? Now on, we have to do whatever we want, if we want, you know.
So now we have to remember every little detail.
I write them down anyways, so now on, I'll go through.
Well, what about all those motions we made where we said, we moved to do what Mr. Groot just put in works? Capture those works.
That's a very individual motion.
Okay.
But when you sit there and you have conversations with the developers, you have conversations with them. During your discussion, they're up there and they're doing this, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, you didn't know that?
No, I knew that, but I'm just.
If you don't make it into your motion, that.
Reiterate the fact.
That you're gonna make these changes.
Like five hundred, thousand-dollar homes to start versus three to five hundred?
Yeah, they were up there telling us that, but we never made it part of our motion. Same thing with the gate. They said they were gonna do it, we never made it part of our motion. We assume because they handed the plans in and the plan showed a gate, that that's what was in the document.
Yeah, but once we approve that, that, that plan, that gate was in there, correct?
You would think. That's my argument to Brian, but Brian's, Brian's taking Lonnie's side on this one. I don't necessarily agree with him.
So why'd they come back to see us then?
Yeah.
For permission?
There you go. Answer that.
They can't mind that.
All right, so we can deny it, tell them Bill the original then. That isn't what you said the other night, though, when Shankis asked the question. That's what the key is, do you deny it?
I think there's no sinkholes on those streets.
All right, we're done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for your time, we appreciate it.